Very good. Then I'll call the May 24th meeting of McHenry County Conservation District to order and ask everyone to rise for a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Hello, Paul.
President Henney.
Present.
Vice President. Secretary Thomas.
Present.
Treasurer Fritz.
Here.
Trustee Dong.
Here.
Trustee Gaten.
Here.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Present. That, uh, yeah, you want to read the conservation ethic? Uh, goal number six, to foster conservation ethic among McHenry County citizens, helping all of us. Regardless of the basis of our interest in nature, develop a greater awareness of our role in and responsibility for the total community of life. Conservation ethic asks us to assume a moral duty to become educated about conservation issues and then to act on that information. Conservation ethic is an attitude that recognizes the importance of preserving the natural heritage of this county's open space. Goal number four, to interpret and promote an overall significance of natural and cultural resources to promote public understanding and support of the district land management practices. Thank you, Sean, about the conservation stewardship pledge.
Pledge to make a difference by standing up for our water, wildlife, and way of life in McHenry County. Our quality of life in McHenry County depends on healthy and sustainable natural resources. Thoughtfully developed cities and towns, a strong economy, and beautiful outdoor places to explore, discover, and recreate. We will empower you to conserve our water, wildlife, and way of life here in McHenry County by actively seeking your input and support.
Thank you. I motion to adopt the agenda. And as the motion, the second, I'll second it. Chris, as the second, Wolf Hall, please.
Secretary Thomas.
Yes.
Trustee Zimmerman.
Yes.
Trustee Gaten.
Yes.
Trustee Dong.
Yes.
Treasurer Fritz.
Yes.
President Henney.
Yes. Thank you. With that, special recognition presentations, recognition of new employees is for someone here to introduce the new employees.
We do. We have Perry Lee Borges, who is our operations manager, and I believe Larry Nichols. So I'm not sure, Perry or Larry, which one of you we're going to introduce our two new team members?
Um, I will be doing so, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so. First, I'd like to introduce Ken Barokie. Ken is a resident of McHenry County, or McHenry, excuse me. He's the, or was the owner of Broke Home Improvement for over twenty-five years. Ken also has over thirty years in building trades. He has extensive knowledge and experience in building, remodeling, light concrete, drywall, plumbing, tile setting, and electrical. Uh, Ken has also been involved with the district's hunting program for a number of years. Uh, so we're excited to have Ken on board. He just joined the Conservation District here a few weeks ago. And, uh, yeah, he hit the ground running, so very happy to have you have Ken on board. And, um, I'm not sure if Ken is present or not. I don't see him on my screen, but maybe someone else does. And if Ken would like to say a few words, he's more than welcome to.
I see.
Ken is on. Definitely, I think you'll have to ask Ken to unmute.
Hello, Elizabeth?
Hello.
Elizabeth, can you hear me? It's Ken.
I can hear you.
Very good.
I made, I made it in.
Yes.
Glad to have you with us.
Yeah, happy to have you here. What have they had you working on so far?
Uh, well, we did the skirting at, uh, Thomas Woods. We're working on the shelter right now at Fall Pro. Um, doing a lot of plumbing work at LVVC, obviously, after we had the, uh, well issues going on out there. Lot of building inspections, um, variety of, variety of, uh, different jobs we've been on, a lot of training on the equipment, which has been great. Um, everybody's been very patient with us, which is a godsend. Thank goodness for that. Um, really enjoy it and, uh, absolutely ecstatic about having the opportunity to be part of the district, as I've expressed to everybody all along.
Very good. We're happy to have you also. Sounds like you have a lot of experience in many different facets, which will come into handy during the district, I'm sure.
Great. Well, thank you so much for having me.
Thank you. Right, Perry?
Yep, okay. Thank you, Ken.
You're welcome.
Next, we have Tim Zerman. Uh, he's our second building maintenance hire. Uh, Tim started just about a week after Ken did, so, um. Tim's a resident of Woodstock. Uh, he was the owner of Taz Archery Incorporated in Woodstock for over ten years. Uh, Tim also has over seventeen years of experience in the buildings trades. Uh, he was a former union foreman, electrician. He has extensive knowledge, of course, and experience in electrical, as well as knowledge and experience in building, drywall, painting, siding, roofing, and heavy equipment operation. Uh, Tim also has been involved with the district's hunting program, participating in it as well as volunteering. And he has also established a coach and coach, one of the largest competitive archery teams in Illinois. And is fully with the Junior Olympic Archery Development Program sanctioned by the USA Olympic Archery, uh, which is pretty interesting stuff, so. Again, uh, with Tim being familiar with, uh, McHenry County Conservation District and, you know, McHenry County. He too hit the ground running and, uh, he and Ken have teamed up and, uh, just been completing a lot of our in-house projects and, uh, making a lot of progress. So again, thank you, Tim, and, uh, if you can open your mic, if you have a few words to say, it'd be great.
Yeah, I got my mic on. Thanks, Perry.
You bet.
I don't know if everybody can hear me?
He's very, very clear.
Okay, sorry.
You're doing great.
I see there's another Zerman on the board. Not, probably not related, but it's a great name.
I agree.
Oh, yeah, it's been a great, uh, been a joy working with Conservation District for quite a while. Got to know quite a few people from the archery program and helped, uh, Ryan Stewart and Ben O'Day up there with their hunting program. Uh, hunter education program, so been nice to be part of the program and now being on board, uh, working with everybody. So.
Very good. If they, welcome. Wow.
Thank you.
Plenty of things we've worked on, I'm sure.
Yeah, well, Ken's already hit all the, the points, what we've been working on the last two weeks, three weeks, so.
Okay, well, very good. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Perry.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
Thank you. And that brings us to the natural heritage report.
Um, Elizabeth, we, you know, that. Well, as preference, uh, about once every year or fourteen months, we put together a report on what the Land Preservation and Natural Resource Management Division has accomplished over the past year. Um, so we're going to present that to you tonight. Uh, one of the things I'll note before we get going is that this is about a ninety-two page report and it's available for you to read the whole thing. Uh, and that report is condensed from a half a dozen other longer reports that different sections within the division do at the end of each year. Uh, and those are available if you have a particular interest in, in one area or another and you want to delve deeper into it. Uh, but I'm only going to present some highlights tonight out of that report. So you won't see everything that's in the paper copy of the report covered in this presentation, just really some highlights that I picked out. And it won't include items like hunting, which you just reviewed not more than a month ago. So, uh, I've kind of condensed it down to a few of the more interesting things that have happened over the past year. Um, so I'll cover six areas that we are involved in. Those are land protection and administration, our science program, our land management program, our working landscapes, also known as the farm program. Uh, cultural history, our educational outreach, and, uh, and some information about finance and how we've paired with grants and, um, things like that over the past year. So go to the next one, please. Uh, then the Land Preservation and Natural Resource, uh, Management Division was reorganized in the district in two thousand thirteen and several different. Uh, areas within the district were condensed in one division. So we have basically three large areas. We have our land management program and science program. We have our land preservation and land administration program, protecting the land is just the first step. Uh, and we also have the, the Wildlife Resource Center, which are all combined into the division. Uh, this year was once again, uh, the year of COVID nineteen. Back then out, then back several times and staff getting used to being back in the office after, um, a very long hiatus when we were working remotely or partly remotely and partly in the field. Um, although some sections of our division worked in the field most of the time. We also had a drought. Last year during the field season and that impacted our management work and also impacted a lot of our science work. And you see that in some of the results that I'll present to you tonight. Next. Um, this is sort of the guiding light of our work within the district. It's the natural ecosystem management policy. Uh, the board updated this in two thousand twenty-one and made some changes in it. Um, but I want to call your attention to the underlying section here. Uh, because there's often a mistaken notion about what the district actually does with its land management policy. Our primary goal of management efforts is to maintain and reconstruct the best approximate, the best possible approximations of native communities. And we do that by restoring the natural ecological processes that created them, their natural structure and the composition of animal and plants there. Um, sometimes folks can read that to think that we're trying to put every plant back where it was at a certain period in time. And that's not actually the case. We're trying to make these systems more ecologically resilient and more healthy so they can handle things like climate change as we go forward into the next fifty years of the district. And often, almost always, the case is that the natural systems that developed here are the most resilient and the most healthy. But we also restore different kinds of ecosystems and we manage a lot of farmland for its natural resource values as well. So it's a very mixed bag. We're going to talk a little bit about land preservation. And this slide give you an idea of the fact that the district is not the only player in land preservation in McHenry County. In fact, the US Fish and Wildlife Service, the Department of Natural Resources for the state, the Illinois Nature Preserves Commission, the Land Conservancy, which is a private, non-governmental organization. And Openland, which is also an NGO, um, all play a role in partnership with the district in preserving land. Uh, and we interact consistently with all of these partners, especially over the last, I would say fifteen years, as the referendum funds were spent out, two thousand ten, two thousand eleven. These are really the partnerships that come together to protect and manage land in the coming. Next. Uh, this particular graph illustrates. Part of what I'm talking about here, uh, since what you'll see on the left is the year, the twenty years where the district purchased the least amount of land. Not the most, the least. And what you'll see is that period in, in green, uh, involves a lot of the last ten years. And in fact, if you go on a year-by-year basis, calendar year, uh, we did not preserve a lot of land in the last cal- calendar year. We preserved it on both ends of it, or our partners did. Uh, and I think that's important to understand because there's often a misconception out there that the district is consistently always buying large amounts of land. And what we do now is, uh, we are always looking for alternative ways to fund land preservation. That may be grants, requests, sometimes we team with a conservation buyer, somebody who wants to preserve land privately and is willing to put an easement on it. And these diverse partnerships come together in almost every land protection project that we do, and they're many and varied. And we concentrate really at the district on strategic parcels for the district. Uh, but we share management and there are varied ownerships, and that allows us to accomplish a bigger conservation goal. And to kind of bring that into focus, uh, over the past eight years, we've been active in preserving over a thousand acres of land. But we brought, we have bought a very small percentage of that. The rest of it has been purchased or protected by our partners, and we've lent our expertise in management or in land acquisition or in grant writing to help do that. So it's really kind of a shared conservation partnership that moves that ball forward. Next. And I'll use two illustrations of parcels that have closed in the past year, year and a half to illustrate that. Um, this track has just closed in December. It's at the Alden Sedimental Site, which is very near to here a little bit, um, to the northeast. And it was on the Conservation District's land protection list since nineteen eighty-seven. Uh, we made several runs at it. We're unable to work out and deal with the previous owner. Uh, but there was an opportunity after it, it, it went into the heirs of that particular parcel when the owner died. And so we work in a very complex kind of fashion with Openlands who pre-purchased that with the Land Conservancy and private donors who we helped marshal together. To bring the extra funds in to buy it, and it will eventually be purchased by the Department of Natural Resources through a program they call the Natural Areas Acquisition Fund. Which preserves high-quality wetlands and natural areas. And it will eventually be managed in tandem with the state and the district together. Because it will make our life at all the sedimental from a management standpoint much, much easier to do prescription burning. So there's a lot of library cards on that particular parcel to get it done. Next. This occurred a li- um, last year, I don't believe it occurred in this calendar year, but very close to it. And this is a track at Lake Elizabeth that again has been on the district's, uh, acquisition and protection list since nineteen eighty-eight. And we were able to partner with the Wilson family, who the district had a thirty-five-year relationship with. Uh, came time for them to, to finally do something with the land and they wanted to preserve it. And we were able to help put together the Department of Natural Resources and the Wilson family to see that track preserved. Again, we'll co-manage it with the Department of Natural Resources. And it will make our efforts in burning at that site, which is a very dangerous site because of the terrain and the, and the soils, it will make our management efforts much easier. So in terms of how we preserve land, very different than when you're in an era of bond referendum funds, when you can directly purchase. And we really established some close working relationships with a variety of partners over the past decade. Next. Well, that protection is where it starts, but it's not where it ends. Uh, when you administer and manage twenty-six thousand five hundred acres of land across the county, you're eventually going to bump into somebody as a neighbor and issues arise. And they can be simple ones that are easy to solve, or they can be serious incursions, um, where there are impacts to district sites from adjoining landowner. So, uh, that covers intergovernmental agreements with other agencies where we're working with our property that may be, uh, part of an intergovernmental agreement with, with another unit of government. We have such, uh, arrangements in places like Laken and Hill Fenn. Uh, we issue permits, a lot of them to utilities for work to ask to be done on district land to make sure that that work is done in an environmentally sound way. Uh, and then we have what we call land issues, and those can be everything from someone building a garage on our property to a fence line that's off where it has to be put back on as, as the right order between parcels. And we also analyze potential threats. Um, you, this board has looked at some of those in the past where we may have an impact coming to a property adjoining one of ours. And we analyze it from a natural resource perspective and determine whether we should comment on that particular project or not. Next. We also do a lot of science in McHenry counties. And this, what this graph will, will show you is that we have over eight thousand individual biological surveys and scientific studies. That covers everything from fish and mussels to lichens and moths. McHenry County is one of the most studied counties in the northern half of the state. And we continue to add to that each year as we do follow-up studies or we discover new things. And the reason that this is important is because it drives our management approach. Uh, it, it's probably the simplest way to put it is the land will tell you if the management work you're doing is being successful or not successful. And so studying, repeat studies on the same pieces of property, on the same groups over time, give us an idea of whether our management techniques are working, whether they need to be adjusted. Or whether they're, they're kind of in the middle somewhere. And it tells us where we need to look on those activities now. So, uh, just for fun, we've identified nearly a million individual things. Next. Uh, a couple of highlights this year on those inventories. We continue to monitor the Prairie White Fringe Dorkin, which is endemic to the Midwest and no place else in the world. And we have several populations in McHenry County on district lands. And we do the monitoring of this species and actually sometimes do hand pollinating. And, uh, if you were looking at this last year, these numbers would be many, many, many times more than they are this year. But it's not a plant that does well in drought. So this was not a particularly good year for that. But we have trend data which allows us to see how long does it take to recover from the drought? When can we expect larger blooms from that plant going into the future?
Do you have any plants like that or anything that, uh, you actually, if conditions are wrong? Wrong water or whatever, or is it just whatever happens, happens?
Yeah, whatever happens, happens. Um, and we do have a plant like that. It's called a woolly meltweed that is endemic only to the Midwest. And there's very few plants left anywhere in the world. And that plant wakes out from time to time. You won't see it for ten years. And then it pops back up again. So there's a lot we don't understand about some of these, these species that we're doing research on and we hope that someday I understand. Uh, for animals, we are working with the foundation on reintroduction of the food plant for the butterfly. You see there the Baltimore checker spot. The habitat's been preserved. Uh, it's been managed. It's recovered to a higher quality. But the food plant is scarce or missing in some of those wetlands, and we know historically that it occurred there. So with the foundation's help, we've been able to buy those plants using volunteers and staff going and plant them. And after they're established for a couple of years, we can reintroduce the butterfly into different sites. And that's important because you don't want all your eggs in one biological basket and something bad happens on one site. And that's the only place you have that animal. And you could lose it. So you spread that risk out across multiple sites. That's one. Um, we also do an awful lot of monitoring for grants and for weapon mitigation. Uh, it's nice when we pick up the grant money. It's also nice when we pick up the mitigation money. It helps fund a lot of what the district does in natural resources. But we also have to come up with written standards on those projects. And the only way to know that you've attained those standards is to be able to go out and actually measure what's happening on that site. So our plant folks and our volunteers have transect lines that run a hundred meters or two hundred meters. And all along there, every so many feet, they actually analyze a square meter of what kind of plants is there, how frequent is it, what's the density? And then in turn is given to the granters that require it or to the Army Corps of Engineers that requires it. And after five years, once you make standards, then that is released from the monitor. If you don't make standards, you have to keep going until you do. So it takes up a lot of our time during the summer. We're monitoring all those different mitigations or grants that you see on, in the table. We had some unusual animal stories for twenty twenty-one. Um, we had an immature snowy owl at Lost Valley Visitor Center. And you can see, it's not white because it's immature. We expect snowy owls to be white. But it showed up at Lost Valley one day. We're fortunate enough to get a picture of it. The one on your right is, uh, it's kind of an interesting conservation success story. It's a family of river otters at Glacial Park. And for many years, uh, otters were gone from McHenry County. They have re-evaded naturally on their own over the past twenty-five years. But it was always questionable whether they were in the Nippersink water shed or not yet. And so we had a wildlife camp at Glacial Park and, um, there are actually five otters floating around in this picture along with a raccoon and a couple of other odd things. And they're out on a winter night and enjoying the water. Um, we also have long-term studies in place. So this is thirty-six years ago when the district began its program of restoration. We established fifty-two plots and glacial parks, woodlands, and savannas and studied what was there that day in nineteen eighty-six. Um, we now monitored it three times over thirty-six years and it's some of the most comprehensive science related to management of oak woods that we have in the upper Midwest. And so we'll be publishing these results hopefully later this year. And, uh, we're also expanding on those plots to look at what's happening with the soil. Um, land management, and there is a lot of land management information inside the written report. So I'd encourage you, if you're interested, to, to go ahead and read that. I have not gone into all the different management work we do. But, uh, despite the fact that we had very bad weather for burning to wet and to dry over the past year, and we had COVID restrictions during part of the year. Our staff managed to burn about fifteen hundred acres on thirty-two burn days. And that's, uh, that's pretty good given the conditions that we were dealing with over the past year. So, um, burning is the cheapest form of management we can do. And, uh, this year in the spring, we're actually able to split back into two crews again and get more done. And that is hats off to the staff, but also to our volunteer program, which has, uh, supplied us with some well-trained and formerly trained volunteers for burns now. Um, seeding projects and seeding collection takes up a lot of our time in late summer, um, through the fall, and we harvest both by hand with volunteers. On harder-to-find species and with equipment. And I would just, uh, you know, call your attention to a couple of bottom-line figures. In two thousand twenty-one, we seeded six hundred and seventy-two acres. Now, all of that is new seeding. Sometimes it's enrichment. Um, sometimes it's placing particular species back. Uh, if you look at the seed collections, it's statistics in the next graph, which is on my right as I look at it. Um, that is the amount of seed and its value and the number of pounds that we've collected since two thousand and six. And with the help of a really dedicated staff and volunteer corps, we collected one point two million dollars worth of seed. And all that goes back on the district sites. And, um, to be fair, we used the lowest price available in the seed catalogs to figure that out. So it actually may be a little bit higher than that, but we don't want to overestimate. Working landscapes are, are landscapes that work, that produce things, uh, typically farm, farm commodities or farm animals grazing or, um. Commodity crops or hay. And we divide our working lands into really four tiers. Uh, we have, uh, we don't have much in the way of conventional farmland. That's usually land that's just entering the district's farm program and maybe from a new acquisition. Um, all, all of our properties are what we consider to be sustainable farmland. So the practices that are on those farms are sustainable. While they're caught, they're creating healthy land over time, and they all have conservation plans from the R C S on them. Um, we are beginning to see some of our farmland move into regenerative farming, which is additional practices added to the baseline that we already have to improve land health. And then eventually we have some lands that are converted to habitat, so that's here for. But not all lands are converted to habitat. We have long-term farmland that is going to remain in farmland for a long time. And it can produce something on it like hay and, or local food, and it can still fulfill a lot of the conservation goals that we have. So we do this to really kind of group our farmlands and keep track of where they're at. Next. And just to kind of, because these terms get thrown around so often and they have different meanings to different people. We really kind of look at the, the soil loss as sort of a way to divide these up. So unconventional farming without any conservation practices, including no till or, or anything like that, you could lose on highly erodible, uh, five to six tons of, eight of, uh, soil loss per acre. You get to sustainable, you see it goes down. You get to regenerative, you don't lose much and you actually start to build it up. And I would say most of the district land, if not all of it, is in sustainable and regenerative categories from this standpoint. So our farm program and our operators are doing a really good job on district farmland. When we do have problems, they're small, they're isolated, they're easy to make. I will put a couple of our farm program highlights this year. Um, we did bring bison to graze at Pleasant Valley. That was a, a potential idea that surfaced the first year I worked at the district, so it's been around for a long time. And it's kind of nice to see that fulfillment of that happening. We have cattle and bison next to one another, so it allows us to study at the same time the impacts on breeding bird, breeding grass on birds from two types of grazing. And we have that study going on now. And we also, the district. And we also, the district entered into its first organic lease ever. And surprisingly not for vegetables, but for organic grains and concrete. So we have two firsts in our farm program this year.
That isn't actually a picture of that field.
No. It had, it has not been planted. I've searched a lot of time to find an organic grain picture on that.
That looks really good.
I'm going to move to our cultural outreach now. The district maintains a natural resources and cultural history program. For a couple of reasons. First of all, it's an important part of the district's history. So we'll interview folks who lived on district land in the past, whether it was farm or residential and collect their stories. But it also tells us the history of that land and it allows us to make good decisions with land management. Where are drain tiles, woodward ditches put in? Where, where were oak woods preserved on that site over the year? So it's all part of a longer story and the district is really the next chapter in that story. And we don't want to lose those stories that came before us. We created fifty stories for our fifty-year anniversary. And that was very successful, we had a lot of that information available for our anniversary. But now we're looking to make sure we capture stories for the next fifty years. So that we, in our hundredth anniversary, we're not trying to find those stories at the last minute. So our part-time worker Bailey Rewall continues to interview people. She just got back from interviewing someone who worked at Pleasant Valley. When Dr. King came there and spent about three weeks organizing his Chicago strategy in the sixties. So there are these stories all over our sites that we want to make sure get preserved. Our Wildlife Resource Center is probably king of natural resource outreach. They handled this year two thousand three hundred and eighty-eight separate phone calls. And that's from talking homeowners and raccoons off the roof, so to speak, to eighteen public programs even with COVID. That have two hundred and seventy people in attendance, usually much, much larger than that. They also take care of our planning head start program for Lake McHenry County, our Green Snake Program. And when they're not busy with that, they rehabilitated a hundred and eighty-seven animals. So they're really frontline interpreters of the public that answer problems when the public calls, how do I? And the problem comes from home. Next. Our volunteer stewardship program, as you can see from this graph, has really taken offense to be, have a full-time person devoted to recruiting volunteers for natural resources. And the numbers, even with COVID, they had a slight dip, but they're still on the upturn. And that's allowing us to put more people on the land, doing more land management work, or seed collection, or biological inventories. This year, our, our volunteer group also Jackie Burrell and Tom Simpson put together what they call Tom Talks. Which are recorded talks about different natural history topics and they're available on YouTube. So you can go to the opening one, or if you didn't catch it, they're on there from, you can take a look at the different topics, they're very popular. To talk a little bit about conservation funding. We're always looking for places where we can find additional funding to do projects. Because we all, the district's operational funding is very limited. So you're going to see the work, the initials MTCF on a lot of these. And the reason is that they are very active and they work very closely with our division when there's a grant opportunity. So we received through them a number, either direct funding from MCCF or they worked with our staff to put together a grant and submitted it and administered it. So we have grants for everything from putting prairie down to putting pollinator plant in, plant in. To the Big Woods Fund, which is permanent and takes donations each year for replanting oats. We also worked with them on some land protection grants. So MCCF worked on a grant for coral woods that was successful. But we also worked with open lands and their habitat grant. And, and we partnered very closely on that and that's brought six million dollars into McHenry County for land protection and restoration over the past four, four years. And we work with the knockout, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service for monies that are available for resewing prairies, grasslands and wetlands as part of the North American Wetland Conservation Act. And we received some dollars for that this year. We actually got paid for some of the work we did on Fish and Wildlife Service property that enjoys ours. I am very happy to report to you that after a lot of work on the behalf of staff. The School Springs Wetland and Mitigation Bank was approved at the end of the year, last year. And we have already made two sales this year. One for a hundred ninety-six thousand for stream credits and one for wetland credits for seventy-two thousand, we have a couple more pending. And our first run, and this is terms of wetlands and stream credits that are available. We still have six hundred and eighty feet and about five acres of wetland. Those numbers will go up as we make those monitoring standards. So we expect for the next three to four years, we'll be able to expect some income from the School Springs Wetland and Stream Mitigation Bank. That flows into the Natural Resource Special Revenue Fund. And that fund us several things. It funds perpetual management costs at these mitigation sites. Because even after you make standards, you are responsible for management in perpetuity. And so that helps fund that to make sure if there's not a resource management division someday at the district. There's still money available to do the management with contractors that that has to happen legally on that. Same thing with many grants. It allows us to, to complete our grants when they're reimbursable grants. We're able to draw from that fund, do the work and then be reimbursed at the end of the grant cycle for some of the wetland and stream projects that we do. But it also releases financial stressors on the general operations budget and that allows those dollars to be diverted to other departments, divisions and district programs. So for every dollar that flows into natural resources through this fund, it's another dollar that isn't being requested out of special revenue. So it works to the benefit of the whole district. So I'm going to close with the most recent report from the UN. It's got a long name, the Intergovernmental Science Policy Platform on biodiversity ecosystem services reported from May of this year. And it's estimated that Earth has about eight million species, that includes all the insects. A million of those, one out of eight are threatened with extinction, many of within the next few decades. But the trend on district sites is reversed. Where we're able to put thoughtful land protection, diverse partnerships and purposeful land management efforts together. We're seeing the diversity increase on our sites. And so it's local efforts that really change a global projection like this. It doesn't happen at this level, it happens at this level across the world. And we're certainly doing our part here at the district. And I will just end by saying, when you look at those numbers and you see what's in front of us with climate change and with the, the stress on species today. Our mission's never been more critical than it is at this very moment. And I left, I leave you with a quote from Father Thomas Berry, who wrote a book called A Great Work in nineteen ninety-nine, which laid out what he considered to be the most important work of humanity in the next century, that was preserving life on Earth. And he said, "We live in a rare and defining moment of grace in the first decades of the twenty-first century." And our decisions in those first few years will determine the fate of humanity for the next ten thousand. And I would only add, it'll determine the fate of a lot of all the things involved. So it's been a good year despite some real stressors on the agency and the staff and the environment. And I'm pleased to be able to report that to you.
Well, thank you very much. You said there was a written copy of the report available?
I believe it's in the packet. I actually did a corrected copy because as you know, once you look at something for two weeks and you go back and look at it a week later, you go, boy, it's spelled that wrong and that wrong. So there's a corrected copy that is, is in there and you'll be able to, I encourage you to read it. Got lots of fun pictures.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions?
And we have members of our team here as well.
They're from the team, everything there.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you. Land of the Trust season reported, anybody have anything? Involved in the report?
No, I'd just like to say the word on. My first full white board package reading through, it was pretty hefty. You know, Ed, thank you. That was just amazing. I was just, uh, listening to you and I'm sure it's very difficult to find out what you're going to cut from that, I'm sure. You know, there's so much depth to what you had to present, so thank you. I, I really enjoyed that presentation.
Thank you. And again, I encourage you to read this, read the other reports that are part of it. You can get those too, as well. There's, they're full of all kinds of.
Very well put out and I'm sure it's just, just the tip of what you know, your position. So thanks. Really beneficial to me and, you know, the other thing too was that, that New York Times article that, that came out that Elizabeth sent that to us and, you know, New York Times is read around the world. You know, it's kind of like the Wall Street Journal and, you know, to be reported in such a prestigious print was, was great to read about. So the district should be very proud of, of that exposure. That's, that's just amazing. I, I was very happy to read that and to know that I'm going to be, you know, part of this for the next few years. So thanks.
A county board liaison is on the report.
Thank you. Um, so first, I want to say that at our meeting last Tuesday, we did appoint the new person who will be taking on the spot when John decides to make.
Well, it's not my decision.
And the person's name is Lloyd Ever, Ever. So, yeah, I haven't not met him yet, but I'm looking forward to it. And we also had a lively meeting on the seventeenth. There were a lot of public comments due to people concerned with high-speed fiber going around the internet and are going around the county. And also Pride Resolution and including or not including flag and it did not get to the county's agenda. So there may be a special meeting coming up at some point to declare June Pride Month. Um, this was in the green guide. I don't know if you guys got all this, but this was in each of our county board members' mailboxes. So do you guys, I assume you have those?
We do have the Artists' Center, I think we have downstairs too.
Okay, yeah. And then May eighteenth, so last Wednesday, we had a special finance meeting talking about the ARPA funds. And we are reevaluating submissions that scored between sixty and seventy-nine. And looking to see, because we have a lot of money left, so we're looking to see how we can further those along. We are ending all submissions as of June thirtieth for now, just to see where we are and we're currently, from what we've approved, ten point three million dollars out of the twenty-nine point nine million. And that went to fourteen different grantees outside the county government. So if the district has anything that they want to submit, we would have to be in by June thirtieth.
So there's nineteen million dollars left?
Yes. Now, there's, there's things in the pipeline. There's applications that have started, but we haven't seen yet, or applications that were not approved, but are going to go back and look at again. And then there's some infrastructure, there's a couple sewer projects in there and so that we're going to have a different rubric for some of those, just because they're not actually helping. Helping people, specifically it is more infrastructure and funding the infrastructure instead of helping people. We've been, we've been, obviously we've applied for ARPA through tourism and have been unsuccessful and by other tapping pods. We have not received any ARPA dollars. We had some internal discussions with the foundation. The challenge has been is our projects are not fitting the criteria due to the impact of COVID. We are looking at some other outreach potential through the foundation, but it would be a new initiative. And what we've been trying to do is take care of existing infrastructure areas of concern. And because of the long time, we haven't been able to ramp up with new projects or ideas to bring into fruition. So, so then I would, I would reevaluate your application and look to see how it can fit into infrastructure.
If we, if we had any, under the county would have been scored, you know what the score is.
We have not, because we were directed to go the other direction to tourism. So if we can, and that was the consultant that looked at our stuff initially. And again, Pete's been phenomenal to be cooperative and to try to find a way. And so we have had some discussions of how we've been looking for those congressmen, special dollar projects, other areas. We just not tapped anything. So any help, any guidance, we greatly appreciate that.
Yeah, when, when they come out with a new rubric, if I can, you know, see it, then I can let you guys know. And I can be in a meeting with you and Pete or whoever we need to be too. Kevin? Also, just so you guys are aware, we have passed some resolutions due to the increase of gas and products. I'm sure you guys were all feeling it too. So we've had to pass several resolutions for emergency appropriations to change our budget. Sheriff's Office, Transportation, those are the biggest ones because obviously everything's over budget right now. And then lastly, we did pass the new liver organs. So you guys can start looking into that if you want to have special projects or events out here. And we'll make it more cheaper and just an easier process. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you, Kelly. I don't have anything to report. Thanks. Let me move this on to public comments. Do we have anybody else?
I don't see anyone.
All right. Four comments, consent agenda. I wonder if it's time for you to make a motion?
Okay, I make the motion to approve the consent agenda as is.
Yes, I don't, does anybody have anything on poll? Nobody's called me, so they do, so I think you, you're good to go.
Twelve point one approval of minutes of previous meetings. Twelve point one A, April sixth, twenty twenty-two, special call conservation conference. Twelve point one B, April twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, community apple. Twelve point one C, April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, regular monthly. Twelve point two, exceptions of treasuries report. Twelve point two A, exceptions of treasuries report for April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Twelve point two B, exceptions of general one budget variance report this year, twenty twenty-two, fourth quarter. Twelve point three, resolution number twenty-two dash twenty-nine, a resolution awarding contract to the lowest qualified bidder. Westside tractor of Willcava, Illinois, for the purchase of one new replacement John Gares side loader with a severe duty, severe duty package for habitat restoration work. Throughout the county, for a total cost not to exceed ninety-nine thousand four hundred. Bid number zero two 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 point oh eight point oh three. Twelve point four, resolution number twenty-two dash thirty. A resolution authorizing conference and related travel expenditures for IT systems administrator. Stephanie Michael to attend the GMIS annual conference at across not to exceed one thousand five hundred. Twelve point five, resolution number twenty-two dash thirty-one, a resolution authorized from the district to participate in and provide an in-flight match for the county conservation foundations. Right, submitted to the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation's twenty twenty-two. Banana Butterfly and Pollinators Conservation Plan and authorizing the executive director to execute any necessary documents. Twelve point six, by resolution number twenty-two dash thirty-two. A resolution authorizing the payment of the McHenry County Collector and McHenry County Treasurer for the twenty twenty-one first installment of property taxes in the amount, in an amount not to exceed eighty-four thousand five hundred fifty-five dollars and twenty-five cents. Twelve point seven, resolution number twenty-two dash thirty-three, a resolution ratifying the executive director's execution of a license agreement with Commonwealth Edison for use of six to seven oh seven South US Route thirty-one in Richmond, Illinois. For a lay-down yard from March first, twenty twenty-two through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two for a license fee of five thousand dollars. Twelve point eight, resolution number twenty-two dash thirty-four, a resolution ratifying the executive director's execution of a license agreement with Commonwealth Edison for temporary access and construction of a post-distillation and fiber conduit installation project, Glacial Park Conservation Area in Richmond, Illinois. An assessment of an oak woodland function impact fee of ten thousand dollars. Twelve point nine, resolution number twenty-two dash thirty-five. A resolution accepted in the twenty twenty-one natural heritage, heritage stewardship stewardship report. Twelve point ten, ordinance number twenty-two dash ten seventeen. And ordinance authorizing the transfer of seven thousand four hundred from the this year, twenty twenty-three. GL budget line item number zero one dash four dash seven nine zero. Unanticipated expenditures to GL budget line. Item number oh one dash oh eight dash eight point eight. Restoration and management equipment for the purchase of John Deere's side loader with severe duty package. Twelve point eleven, resolution number twenty-two dash thirty-eight. A resolution authorizing the executive director to execute a joint wrestling venture lease with Brad Spinoles.
Spinoles.
At seven, at twenty-five dollar acre on olive wedge metal. ASM dash oh three, ten plus or minus acres for the term on June first, twenty twenty-two to February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. Twelve point twelve, resolution number twenty-two dash thirty-nine. A resolution ratifying the executive director's execution of a license agreement, L L B Inc. of Freeport-Mead. Doctor Stan, stand up paddleboard lessons at the Atwood Falls Conservation Area. For a term of May first, twenty twenty-two through October thirty-first. For a license fee of fifteen percent gross rate revenue collected.
Thank you, Linda.
You're welcome.
Oh, second, second, but Sean. Ball call.
Trusty Gage.
Yes.
Secretary Thomas.
Yes.
Trusty Zimmerman.
Yes.
Trusty Don.
Yes.
Treasury Fritz.
Yes.
President Henry.
Yes, motion carries unanimously. The other board business, approval of bills payable. Who, anybody, uh, when did you find some for us?
A six 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 one Albertson Safeway for thirty dollars and thirty-three cents. A one nine 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 Anderson Lock. Lock Company, one thirty-three eighty cents, M three five six six Minars. He has another number, six six three three oh for one fifty-one seventy-three.
Miles forty. I did, but I don't know the numbers. I just know. Okay, we'll be able to get them.
Coles.
Coles, okay.
Coles for. Work jeans.
I saw that too.
Anything else, who else? Vic, let Pat, you're.
A thirteen point one B consideration to approve the payment to Council FS. Is indicated on the submission of bills pending report, period ending April thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
So a second. We have a second. We have any questions? Ball call please.
Trusty Don.
Yes.
Secretary Thomas.
Yes.
Trusty Zimmerman.
Yes.
Treasury Fritz.
Yes.
Trusty Gage.
Yes.
And President Henry.
I will abstain. Motion carries, uh, with five, four, and one abstention. Uh, second motion, please, Pat.
I move thirteen point one C, consideration to approve the payment. The balance of bills is indicated on the submission of bills pending report for the month of. Month ending April thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
So a second, second, same as Sean. There's no questions, uh, roll call please.
Trusty Gage.
Yes.
Treasury Fritz.
Yes.
Trusty Zimmerman.
Yes.
Secretary Thomas.
Yes.
Trusty Don.
Yes.
President Henry.
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Okay, intergovernmental personnel benefit cooperative. Andy, are you handling that one?
Uh, sure, I can start it.
Okay.
As you remember, last fall, we asked IPDC to give us some great estimates for the budget. Um, again, start the twenty-three fiscal year budget with. We only had about seven months experience with it at that time, so we really had to kind of work to come up with something. They gave us a range for all the plans, a high to low. So what we did is we used the high end of their estimated rate increases that would go in effect July first of twenty-two. Um, and that's what we presented to the board saying, you know, here's what would be the worst case cost. We also presented that to staff showing the cost sharing based on that high end of. If the rates, you know, going at the high end of this, this would be the cost increase. Um, and the board agreed at that time that we would hold the cost sharing flat and not change the plans. Um, until this year, we look at it again, because new rates will affect July first of twenty-two. We're on an eighteen-month block at that. So now we have the final rates, as you saw in the summary, they came in much more favorable than, you know, the high end ten percent. Um, in fact, for the PPO, we were showing a ten percent increase. And they showed for twelve months a six and a half percent increase, so almost less than half. Uh, the line is short of that, it was about a twenty thousand dollar, twenty-six thousand dollar savings from the cost estimate in October. If you keep everything the same and just put those new rates in, it's a twenty-six thousand dollar decrease in the annual cost. That's one piece of the story. Then it gets a little more complicated that. In March of this year, the IPC board decided that we were going to go with two renewal periods. So. Always, you know, for the whole, um, twenty-some years of IPC's existence. They had one plan that started on July first, everybody's rates, all the rates from July first. That was difficult for a lot of members who had calendar years, like us, who've been on fiscal years. So they decided to move everybody that was on a plan year, which is what we are, January first calendar year, it's our plan year. They were going to give, make a dual rate and all those people would go on, their rate renewal would happen on January first. It's about forty percent of that. IDPC membership. So we don't have a choice in that. Um, and when they decided to do that, they basically had to go into six months rate lock or eighteen month. And they made it for everybody out of January first plan year. They're going to lock their rates in for eighteen months. And that rate lock will go in effect July first of this calendar twenty-two, just like we knew with the rates were going to change. But now they're going to change and get locked in for another eighteen months. Um, so when they did that, if you look at the summary, tweaked it just a little bit higher, the annual rate increase is six and a half percent for the PPO. Went to seven point nine percent for eighteen months. But if you take that on an annualized basis, it's actually even more favorable. It comes down to about five percent increase with PPO. The HMO is actually a decrease, so it's going down four tenths of a percent. Um, that was up one point four percent. So what we would like to do, since everything's more favorable than we thought it would be. Um, is again, just hold everything constant. So we're not changing the plans. When those rate increases go in effect on July first of this year. Then all the employees' rates would go up accordingly, you know, by that rate increase. But we're not changing the percent of cost yet. So those would remain unchanged. Um, and that would stay that way, you know, for sure through calendar year twenty-two. In calendar year twenty-three, if the board wanted to make a employee cost sharing increase, they could consider it. Um, but, you know, the, the rates won't change because again, it'll fix for the whole calendar year twenty-three as well. Uh, so what we're looking for now is a consensus to hold it flat, but that's okay, because again, the costs are low. If the board said no today, then what we would need to do is move kind of quickly, because. We have to look at all the different plans available, look at those costs. Um, we have to get our final decisions to IDPC by September. We haven't announced the calendar this year, but based on priorities by September. So then what we'd gain, we'd have, you know, June, July to figure things out, the cost, bring it back to the board. Um, and then get it all set up to get to IPDC and open enrollment and actual. But what we're looking for today is a consensus not to make changes and just to move forward as is.
They don't want to have a issue with. I see no problem with just going forward with what we have, what the plan is.
And one other related really favorable piece of news. So I kept everything constant, you know, we did that twenty-six thousand, twenty-six thousand dollars in savings. The reality is, as we filled in many positions over the last four months, since I built the budget back in October twenty-two. We now have seven employees that have waived insurance. So when I built the budget, I was only showing three, so that's additional savings. Um, the budget will be, expenditure will be under by about sixty thousand dollars, maybe a little bit more.
I will mention too, this for Andy, and he's also joined the IPDC on the board, uh, for that area. So we want to congratulate him being here and having a shipwreck.
Yeah. Andy was able to fix our rates all the time.
No, that, yeah, no, no. We do these very often, but it's good to have.
I'm sure when you did that, yes. Very good. All right, well. I think that sounds great. I don't see problems. All right, you have a consensus. All right. Resolution authorizing the executive director review and. Sent by District Legal Counsel to execute temporary license agreement with Environmental Defenders of McCannery County, Kishawaki River Porter Clearing and Maintenance. Is there any new developments on that?
Yes, let me get an update. And I see that Pat Lawler is also out with us this evening here. So, um. Val did a great job in working with Andrew, our counsel, to prepare the agreement that went over and sent it to the Environmental Defenders. They did send it back to us with some suggested changes and staff looked at that and saw that there are certain things that we could be agreeable to in most of that language. And that's being tweaked. And I think the biggest piece that we need to work through right now is the insurance requirements and providing what they had. And, um, for the type of activity for the general liability, we would like to see two million dollars. And they only carry a policy for one million. So in discussion, did it change, had some conversation with Val today, as well as exchange with counsel. We would like to go back to the Environmental Defenders and get a determination of what it would cost them to get that additional million dollar coverage. Um, out into the policies that is to proceed. And once we have that known cost, then we can go in and make an assessment. Is that reasonable, unreasonable, et cetera? Um, basically, it would do a proactive approach, preventing a situation where then the district. Um, having deeper pockets that we end up and then having to come back and then we get into some, some squabbles or incidents with the defenders and then it just turns out badly. So I think by having them go forward with that, again, I don't know what that additional coverage, whether they can obtain it or not for this. But I guess that's where I would like to be. This action, this evening outside of that. Um, would allow myself and and counsel to then, once we get everything in place, to be able to proceed. But thoughts from the board as far as this is.
Do we, do we ask for two million dollars on?
Yeah, is that, that's definitely in by our carrier? Who's our carrier?
So we yourself, we're kind of a self-insured risk pool. And for higher risk types of activities, two million is what is requested. There are some agreements that we have in place that we've talked about that are at a one million dollar level. It probably could be looked to be increased. But again, it's, it's all based on other examples of comparable type of. So this is, this is, you know, we talked before about, you know, clearing brush in the waterway. An area, uh, chainsaws and water, um, those are high risk activities.
Have you had, have you talked to them about, uh, two million dollars, ten million dollars?
We just got this information going back today. I want to talk with the board first and then, um, if the board was agreeable with that approach, then we will go back. And I'll speak with the executive director, Tanner, um, about that and see what that costs.
What if? I'm good with that?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so are you wanting the, this resolution adopted this evening?
If you would, uh, if you are willing to adopt this, then if we can work through the details. Then we can proceed if they get the materials and get the insurance, then we don't have to wait till June twenty-first for action. Um, if not, we can hold it and we can come back. So that's up to the discretion of the board.
Anyone willing to sponsor this reservation? Anyone willing to make a motion? Your second?
Awesome.
Chris has a second. Uh, any more discussion? Hey, I'll call the roll.
Secretary Thomas.
Yes.
Trusty Zimmerman.
Yes.
Treasury Fritz.
Yes.
Trusty Gage.
Yes.
Trusty Don.
Yes.
President Henry.
Yes, motion carries unanimously, so you got to go ahead.
Great, thank you.
All right, then we bring to executive director's report.
Okay, just a few things to update you on. And, um, landscapes is out. Um, you probably have seen this after a lot of great programs, Friday concerts are starting, camps. Uh, the foundation has their pedal, paddle, saddle, for the one take your, uh, your announcement. So if you haven't registered, uh, please do so. That's on Sunday, June twelfth, at Glacial Park. So whether you're coming by horse, by bike, or or you're by canoe, um, we hope to see you. If not, just come for lunch and and, uh, be part of the, the meet and greet. At those funds as a fundraiser and fundraiser. Um, so that's, um, important. Obviously, fishing, um, a lot of activity that's, that's going on. So also in this, uh, edition is the congressional conversations. That were held at the Congress and we did follow up with, uh, written correspondence out to all the delegates. There is a survey that's being completed and then I will have a financial report to share with everybody once we have all that tabulated. And then that'll go with the foundation, because they agreed to reimburse us for the expenses, which is way under than what we had.
Oh, is that?
Um, because many of the things were donated. Um, you, you heard we had some water issues at Lost Family Visitor Center. The septic up plumbing wasn't working. We are now looking into, um, some of the work that was contracted beginning. Again, a lot of sediment, a lot of issues, uh, with, with the well water there and just to see if there's any type of, so we're looking back to our original. Instruction documents and looking at that, uh, to kind of run that. So we'll give you more information as that comes forward. Um, I did send out, uh, correspondence to everyone on the fencing. And, um, I don't know if anyone from the board was contacted, but the, obviously, we own a lot of land that it joins neighboring properties. And, and so, I mean, it's not our practice to maintain, uh, fencing. Uh, there are some properties that at one particular time, a fence went up on district property. Um, not quite sure exactly, you know, each situation is very different, but when the fencing has failed. Um, then instead of just going ahead and replacing it, if it's not something that's needed by the district, we have taken that fencing down. So, um, the latest one I shared with the board was over at the Birdie Education Center, these photos. Um, you know, unless the board looks to us to do something different. Um, we are evaluating a lot of these factors, but the district does not seem, you know, giving some options. So I just wanted to bring that up, just so the board was aware and if there was any direction for the staff, otherwise. Um, we've been following up correspondence and.
Are you good with that?
Uh, let's see here. The other, uh, piece that I wanted to share with everybody, and I did have a little video, and I don't know, I know what timing here. If you're interested, or we can do it at the end. So I'm going to see if I can do this here very quickly. Um, let's hope technology works. We were yesterday at Glacial Park with, um, Congresswoman Underwood. Okay.
I'm good.
Yeah, I got the video.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's no sound.
There's no sound here.
The video is not rolling there. It's only, I'm with the screen. I see that.
Yeah.
Well, that's.
Very cool. Two, three, go.
Is there something on that?
Glacial Park, your old line of history, the county conservation. It's that direction and it's way off in the distance. Just to the left of that first hill in front of that tree line, this is the project here. That contributes to this project are the 100 acres of wetlands that will be restored to this, this project. And then also remeandering of 8,750 feet of headliner streams that have been shrinking and shrinking to the future. So this restoration project will entail some earth removals.
Oh.
At one, it doesn't want to do with the other.
This is advertisement.
Yeah.
All right. Well, good attempt here. It was working before and I, it could show it to you or the not at home here to have it come through, but I'll just be brief here. So we had a lovely friends and pack the tack sent for grant to Congresswoman Underwood, other of their community project grant. $975,000 was awarded for this project, for the Niprous Saint Creek Restoration Project. C. Byers, who is the president formerly with the Illinois Reserve Commission, was president of friends and pack attacking, is going to send a former trustee of the Conservation District and original member of our Conservation Foundation. And others that's used on the friends and pack attack and just a lot of great people. But we had IDNR, open lands, myself representing the district, Chicago Wilderness. Many of the community, I made some general remarks on behalf of this board and the county board, chairman viewer and the board in welcoming her to Glacial Park. The $975,000, you may recall that one of our conservation congresses, oh, we had CMAP do as part of our Chicago Wilderness as well, infrastructure vision, classing out those ecosystem services and the benefits of wetland restoration. And so just to make sure I've got the numbers here. So $25,000 per acre that is restored is the value of a restoration project. So of this particular project, 100 acres that's envisioned with this Niprous Saint Creek project will ultimately result in about $2.5 million annually, annually that goes back in value that's made. So think about that now within this project, but every restoration project that the Conservation District is doing and on the landscape for helping your sustainable areas, that value that's going back is a value for our drinking water and for flooding the basements and all those types of things. So those are the real, real numbers of ecosystem services that a lot of times don't get counted for when we're looking at just straight out of the dollars that are matched dollar per dollar. So this is a great investment and she was very pleased. She will be not representing our district as we follow the redistricting. We will have four additional Congress people and our two senators. And so we'll be spending some time as we are with all the redistricting in county to get to know our Congress people, but also then to get to know our state best and saw that. Primary, we'll see who's running against the races and then we'll see where we're at at the general election. Did you get a flyer? Anybody that's interested, Senator McCarthy is doing a talking conversation on May 26th. So I will send that out to everybody. That is all for my report.
Any more questions for Elizabeth?
Elizabeth, I got, the only thing I would add to that, we were up there, is at 975,000 is going to be spent directly adjoining district property. So we have, we have half of the streams, half of the wetland, half of the woodlands that are on this property. So in a very real way, I could grant some of that for Glacial Park.
Any particular issues that are, that almost the most that felt were? Any issue that, what are they going to address? What executives going to?
It's mostly flood. It's bad ground that has failed tiles in it for a number of years. And it's, it's on its way back to a lot of that. So this will just allow it to accelerate.
All right. Many assignments and reports. Fox River Ecosystem. Kishawaki.
I unfortunately had a conflict this month while we had the meeting earlier, so I did not.
Okay. Follow us.
The only update that I have is we are working on some opportunities for America the Beautiful. Some great opportunities and some projects that relate to the set of goals and with funding that's coming about. And so as we work towards what we're doing as projects, as the Conservation District, I'm sure there'll be a lot of partners that tie together with whether it be regenerative, sustainable agriculture to preservation of natural lanes or access for all. With the people is one of our, our seven goals. So the next meeting of the executive council will be in July.
I have my own rule.
Uh, no meetings and no report.
That's right. They, everybody was in the field that. Soon enough, you'll work. Okay, I see the IPD and NRPA.
With that, the only association of conservation force of districts will have a meeting, I believe that's next week. And NRPA, I may have shared with you information starting to go for registration for that event, which will be in September. And Chief King will be one of the presenters should be selected with one of the, is one of the program handlers that will be presenting at nationals. So that's, that's great to see as well. And I'll send more information about that as well as with the only association of park districts. The deadline was extended for anyone that was submitting conference educational sessions and that conference is always in January downtown. So more information will be upcoming on that.
Foundation, Linda?
I was not able to attend, but I was, it's, I mean, so again, subtle, subtle, subtle. On June 12th, I will not be able to attend. I will be out of country. But it's, it's a great event. So I don't know what else to add.
They talked about rebranding of the foundation's logo to match the Conservation District's logos. We've discussed that, just looking at more compatibility. So there was an understanding of the two agencies. There was a focus on starting to build their plan to get out and talk to different municipalities and take the show on the road. So they are working on the PowerPoint and then they're teaming up with Shawna and again, we will offer to support them, but they really want to be foundation out in front of the municipalities versus coming, you know, even just maybe who I am, but really want the foundation to share how they're a part of what they do. So they're, they're really working towards that. And then the other piece that they talked about is they want to know when they can start doing some special opportunities. They're very excited about the bison. So the strategic planning session, since we're going to be updating at the end of our three year plan and we did get COVID a little bit late away, but really having the boards come back together in the not too far distant future would be really good. And so we can start working with strategic planning together by going over the stations.
Okay. Bye.
I think I may have said there's another upcoming, there is a golf outing. If anyone is interested, we don't have a person that's been identified to be our MIPAD rep. But if anybody is, we can, for that really would like to do that, to go out to those meetings under once a month. They are a dinner and usually attendance is the mayors and village presidents, some of the trustees, some of the county board. So as we try to make relationships with those other units of government, it is a nice opportunity to show up. Not every time, but every meeting is good just to make those connections. So if anyone's interested, let me know. We take care of the, the admission, you know, the dinner.
Something in the schedule.
I can give that for you. Yeah. And they rotate to different municipalities.
There are good meetings in more than a few, but they're good. Green drinks?
Last meeting, you know, that one I did attend. It was the cycling without age. Again, that's another great event ever. When Lloyd comes, he was there at the last one, actually. And, but it was, that cycling without age program is a program that is separate from us, but John Crane, where our dirt operations and public safety has been very involved with that and making that happen. They do, they're going out to nursing homes. We have a couple of science actions in our landscapes where those that access for all can get on escorted bike and, and be able to enjoy an experience that it would be.
That's what that is. I've been seeing that by my house.
And, and the Crystal Lake Park District is another partner. So the two terminus, Crystal Lake Park District and Conservation District are working. Depending on where you're at, Crystal Lake, they've done Felpro. They did, I believe it's the, let's see, the Highlands.
Cause I live right on the Prairie Trail. So I've been seeing it a lot lately.
Yeah, Hillside Road Parking Lot is one of the locations in Crystal Lake Prairie Trail. And then they're also doing the Hoover Trail. We've got dates selected. So that's in the brochure, but it, again, great.
So shout out. They call it a tri shop. I took a rickshaw, but.
Yeah, yeah. I've just been seeing it. I'm so amazed. I'm just.
I've seen yours a lot.
I didn't know anything about it, but yeah, there had to be some important.
Bicycle pedestrian plan, is John there? Does he have a report?
John, no, I believe he left the meeting. I think this evening, but I updated on the access and I think that go to 2050 plan, that transportation plan was out there.
Naturally, McHenry County.
They did have a meeting today, same as St. Louis, 2050. They might have recorded if anybody's interested. They just went over everything they've learned to date and it was very interesting about all sorts of transportations and the accessibility and including pedestrian bicycle.
Naturally, McHenry County.
I have no update.
Okay, any other outreach contacts and also contacts? Brings us to public comments too. Anyone have any comments?
I don't see any.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, that is. Ray, why don't you make a motion to go to executive session and you can actually read it.
Consider a motion to go into executive session pursuant to 2C1 personnel, 2C5 lease purchase of real estate and 2C21 review of closed session minutes of the Open Meetings Act 5 ILCS 120 dash one.
Wait a second. Second, Sean has a second. One call.
Secretary Fritz?
Yes.
Cecily Dunn?
Yes.
Secretary Thomas? Yes.
Yes.
Cecily Zimmerman?
Yes.
Yes. So then we're going into the executive session. I'm going to have a little five or 10 minute break. I need to. Nice, Andy.
Thank you, everybody at home. We're recording.
Right now, you can try roll call once again.
Okay, President Henry?
Present.
Secretary Thomas?
Present.
Secretary Fritz?
Present.
Cecily Dunn?
Present.
Cecily Gayton?
Present.
And President, well, I'm not calling.
Cecily Zimmerman?
I'm so sorry.
Present.
Okay, with that, uh, we have one action item coming out of executive session with somebody like to make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Okay, make a motion to adopt resolution number 22 dash 37, a resolution approving an employment agreement with Elizabeth S. Cusman for the term of July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2025.
For a second. Pat, yeah, Pat's got the second. Any discussion? Call roll.
Cecily Zimmerman?
Yes.
Secretary Thomas? Yes.
Yes.
Cecily Gayton?
Yes.
Cecily Dunn?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries unanimously. And if there's no other business coming forward, I would make a motion for adjournment. Chris, Sean has the second. So Chris and Sean, roll call.
Cecily Dunn?
Yes.
Secretary Thomas?
Yes.
Cecily Zimmerman?
Yes.
Cecily Fritz?
Yes.
Cecily Gayton?
Yes.
President Henry?
Yes, and we are adjourned.
Good evening, everyone. We have things to sign, right?
Oh, I'm sure we do.
Yes, John and Linda do.
Every time we pass a resolution, one more signature.